Anyway. Race time is right around the corner. What? Mama Beats. That's speak to their side.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, I would just like to mark the sadness of the occasion for loss of our attorney, Mike Lexke, who served with us here for 25 years and was, in addition to being an attorney, a breakout. I couldn't get him to talk into that microphone for the last 25 years, but I will miss him very much nonetheless. He was really a joy to deal with all these years, so he will be missed. And I do want the meeting to start without that. Secondly, I make the motion to kind of codify the fact that we'd already hired his firm of his son Bart Lexke, who has served here and has stayed for many years as well. I make the motion that he will take over as the planning board attorney in this public place. We're going to second for that, please.
Greg Giselle. Christina Bonatakis, yes. Yami Kusa?
Yes.
Lulanta?
Yes.
Barbara Gomez?
Yes.
Loson Pippi?
Yes.
Gensel Hernandez?
Yes.
And Ryan Farquhar.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. That's wonderful. And I appreciate my I'm never going to say that again, I know, but I kind of wish that I did. So welcome. Thank you very much. Before we get started, just to do a quick I want to welcome everybody. Appreciate everyone coming. Those of you who have been here before, hear me say all the time how much I appreciate if the public comes out to meetings. So thank you in advance. As you know, we're here to talk about the study done by our professionals for the area need of redevelopment. So before we get started with that, mark two please square Susan in for us from E F J. He squares that's putting about people, 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 please help me out.
Yes.
It is David.
Susan Chavati, E F J planning.
Thank you. Right up there.
Can you hear me now?
So as usual, when we have a presentation, Susan's going to present. The board will have an opportunity to ask for any questions and then, as always, we'll open it up to the public. Because it's not a normal development application, we won't separate questions and comments like we normally do. So when it's the public's turn to speak, you're welcome to come up and give questions or comments all at once. If necessary, we will have our usual five-minute limit per speaker. And then if it's not too late and someone wants to come up again, we may make that happen depending on the time. So just to lay some ground rules, Susan, we can start.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a fairly short presentation. I think it's 15 slides, including the cover. It's really just summarizing the study that we prepared on your behalf. As I mean, go through and have me answer questions only for at the end, as well as the public. Just going to start with a quick introduction, a little bit about redevelopment as a whole, and then how we kind of got here from the borough's perspective, what the process has been, and what it is from the state's perspective in terms of redevelopment. And then I'll take you through the study area conditions, which is really based on site visits, interviews with borough staff, how to stay our familiarity with the area from the master plan work, phone calls, New Jersey Transit to get a sense of freight guard. So there's a lot of information that came into this report. And I'll give you a high-level view of those conditions and then go through the actual redevelopment criteria from the state statute to determine whether these parcels do or do not meet that criteria. And then we'll conclude with some next steps in this process.
Susan, hang on one second. Could everyone in the back here, Ben, Jeff, you guys are good all the way in the back. Thanks.
So just putting this into context in terms of the borough's planning, I think you all are aware and you know that transit planning and the area around the train station has been for a long time, an important part of Red Bank's overall planning and land use planning. You have enjoyed the designation historically by the state as a regional center in the state's master plan, the regional planning. That actually has expired, but the borough is in the process of trying to kind of re-up that designation. And I think that's in large part because of the existence of this train station makes you a regional center. Likewise, the transit village idea and designation and efforts to gain that designation, that's been ongoing for a number of years. The borough submitted an application back in 2019, early in that year, and then D O T, who is the state entity that oversees that program, their response essentially to the borough was, well, your overlay zoning isn't enough to get you transit village. They wanted to see as a bright zoning ordinances in place or redevelopment planning in order to meet that criteria of a transit village designation. They felt that overlay zoning was a bit too speculative and may or may not actually happen or result in any actual transit-oriented development or TOD. So with that, sort of in the background, the borough has been restarting its transit village process. It was a little bit delayed due to COVID, but certainly the master plan in 2023 recommended carrying that process forward, restarting transit village and looking at your zoning, replacing the overlay zoning district with either a targeted TOD zoning district and as a bright district or in combination with looking at the redevelopment tool as a good option for this train station area. And we'll talk a little bit about why redevelopment is a good fit here, we think, and how it can be beneficial to the borough as a whole. So what got us here tonight is the Borough Council directing you as the planning board, you're the body who does this by statute, to do a preliminary investigation as to whether this station area and then surrounding parcels in a designated study area, whether they all qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. Okay, so that's how we got here tonight. Bit about redevelopment overall from the state. It is embodied in the New Jersey Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, the L R H L. And it really lays out redevelopment as a tool for municipalities to facilitate revitalization of problematic areas generally, properties that for various reasons, and we'll go through those, are unlikely to develop on their own or unlikely to see private investment that might carry them into revitalization. So they need a little bit of extra help. And so there's a whole process that the state has laid out, including financial incentives and other tools that are meant to jumpstart that revitalization process. There is an eminent domain aspect to redevelopment, but it's up to the municipality to determine whether that actually is in play. And in this case, just want to be clear that eminent domain is not on the table here. The Borough Council was very clear in their direction to you all that this is a non-condemnate condemnation study. So there is no redevelopment, excuse me, there is no eminent domain contemplated with this redevelopment study. So once a designation has occurred, and that would be based on the results of this study, the next step would be preparing an actual redevelopment plan for the area. And that is a whole process into itself. But what that does is it essentially creates the development standards for the area. And we'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about what a redevelopment plan contains. But it is a little bit different than traditional zoning. It kind of creates the zoning or the regulatory environment for the redevelopment area. And it can go a lot farther than traditional zoning. It can include very detailed design requirements. It can look at the form-based approach as opposed to traditional zoning. So what the buildings look like, how they relate to each other, where they're placed on the site, what kind of amenities there are in terms of pedestrians and bikes, public spaces. Lots of things can be on the table there. Public improvements, infrastructure, some communities have even used redevelopment to get improvements to their public buildings themselves. So there's a really wide range of things that you can look at with redevelopment that makes it a really useful tool for properties that do need that criteria. And we'll go through those criteria. They are very specific, and you are meant to go through item by item and make sure that you're taking a very careful look that they do or do not meet these criteria. So a quick overview of the study area. Hopefully, most of you can see it. It's outlined in red. This is essentially the train station area, the parking lots, and then a number of key parcels sort of in and around that station area. It's a little bit oddly shaped because of the actual parcel lines. So you see this very long, skinny north-south lot. That is the New Jersey Transit rail yard. And it's just the nature of that lot. It's why it's kind of a long, skinny triangle. But it's a total of about 13 acres. And it includes, as I mentioned, the entire train station area and surface parking, the rail yard, the borough's DPW facility, which is running on Chestnut Street, and then several privately-owned parcels that are also included in this area. The largest land use is surface parking, and we'll talk a little bit about that and the condition of that parking. And then if you look at the zoning, which is on the next slide, it is a real mix of business zoning, industrial, light industrial, regular industrial zoning, and then that train station overlay. So there's a number of different districts that are in place in this area. And then also a portion of the northern portion of the area is a part of the borough's existing designated rehabilitation area, which is also was designated under the L R H L, but it's slightly different than a redevelopment area. And here you see on the left, this is the land use map, and you'll see that gray color, if you can discern that, that's all the parking lots, mostly owned by New Jersey Transit. Then there's sort of a dark teal, that's the sort of railroad infrastructure, that would be the rail yard, as well as the station itself, the station building, an immediate area around that. You see a little bit of mixed-use business, some sort of nonprofit use. And then, of course, the blue is the borough's DPW facility. In terms of the zoning, which you can see on the right, you see the different zoning districts in place. The green hatched area, which is actually just outside the study area, is the borough's affordable housing overlay that has been developed out as affordable housing and residential uses. So that is sort of in the context, but it's not in the study area itself. You can see in the yellow hatched area, that is the rehabilitation area that covers a portion of the northern part of the study area. So that's land use and zoning. And then we looked also at property ownership and the tax information. Ownership is an important consideration, and even though there are a number of parcels in play here, there's only five owners for this 13-acre area. New Jersey Transit owns the largest portion, that is all of the lots, the infrastructure. It's a total of nine different parcels and about eight and a half acres. And then Den Holt's Properties is the largest, let's say, private property owner here. They own a total of five properties in the area. And I know you can't all see the arrows, but I'm just going to go through the top level. The borough itself has the DPW property, which is technically two parcels. And that total is about 1.2 acres, 1.1 acres. And then there's a property that's owned by Count Basie Theater, which is sort of support and back office use for their main use, obviously, here on Monma Street. It's classroom space, rehearsal space, props, that type of thing, costuming. So really providing all of that background support. That's about an acre and a half. And then there is one small privately-owned property really at the northeast corner, which is the Mexican Restaurant and some apartments above, right there at the corner of Monma. The total assessed value of this entire assemblage is about 13 and a half million dollars. However, the most recent tax year revenue was only about 110,000 in taxes, and that really is reflective of the municipal public property ownership of a lot of this study area. So it is not generating a lot of tax because of the nature of the ownership and the use. So this is a very, very top-level sense of the site conditions. The study actually went through block by block, each parcel, looking at photo documentation, a sense of what the conditions currently are. But we do have some takeaways here. And I think it's not news to anyone that there is a significant amount of underutilized surface parking here. It varies, and we've been out there at different times of the day. Interestingly, I think the parking that's actually closest to the station is less used, and the parking that's a little bit farther away is a little bit more heavily utilized, largely because of all that impervious surface, which is in varying stages of condition. Some of it's cracked, but most of it's in decently good shape. But it does create a lot of issues with drainage. And this is a fairly low-living area. I'm sure you all are aware, in a heavy rain, you have ponding, backs up, and so a lot of these properties do experience pretty frequent rain flooding. In terms of the built environment itself, the buildings, generally, they're in fairly good shape. I would say the big exception, which I'll talk about, is the DPW facility, but otherwise, the privately-owned buildings are reasonably in good shape. There's always maintenance issues that are obviously in play, and some are maybe a bit farther along than others. Some of them do have some age to these buildings. Most of them are quite old. The DPW property is really the exception. I spent a good hour, hour and a half there with your DPW chief, and he walked me through every aspect of that property. There's a lot of issues there. The trailers are 20 years past their life, likely. They're quite deteriorated. The buildings themselves that are not trailers have their own issues as well. Overall, there's just a real lack of functionality. There's a tight space. There's a lot going on. I happened to be there after a snowstorm, so there's salt, snowplows, you know, trying to kind of jockey all their positions on the site that is quite small and also provides public parking for the offices themselves. So there's a real lack of functionality and circulation. There's a lot of issues with actual storage space. These buildings are being required to do a lot. And so some of the equipment is not able to be stored indoors. It has to be stored outdoors. That lessens the lifetime of your public equipment. So that is a real issue, just generally on that property. And then it is an environmentally contaminated site. It's a brownfield. It's being monitored on a regular basis by the state. There's no imminent issue there, but it is in their system, and they do have to have regular monitoring by the state. Otherwise otherwise, in the study area, there's a couple kind of problematic uses. There is a tiny sliver of a property that is used for billboard, which in the master plan talks about that not being an ideal use in the downtown. We'd like to sort of see fewer billboards. It's obviously creating revenue for that property owner, but it's an off-site billboard. And then generally, auto storage, there's some auto repair, auto storage that's happening in this area. Again, not the most ideal use for sort of downtown core environment. And then maybe not necessarily unique to the study area, but certainly it's affected by the railroad tracks and just the nature of an at-grade railroad. The pedestrian environment leaves something to be desired. There are sidewalks generally in the area. They vary by condition. There's some inconsistency there. But just the nature of the tracks and the condition of the sidewalks as you cross those railroad tracks make it a little bit problematic from a pedestrian standpoint. And there is no designated bike infrastructure. There's your one bike lane on Bridge Avenue is near the study area, but it's not within the study area. So there's really no dedicated bike facilities. Obviously, there's bike parking, but there's not dedicated bike lanes. And then the last thing, which is a little bit interesting, is you do have those high-tension electrical wires. They're coming sort of north-south through the parking lot. It's working okay for the parking use, but it does create a lot of issues in terms of future development or different uses of that site. That is something that will have to be looked at. And that is an impairment for future development. So that's a very high-level look at the conditions. And here, it's just a selection of photos. We have a lot more. But you can see the sort of the underutilization of the station parking. This is sort of close to the station area itself. You can see the issues of drainage. This was after the snow had largely melted, but the water is still there. You have pitted lots and varying issues with surface. You see the billboard here. The bottom-left photo is the closest we could get into the rail yard. That is a whole other area, the New Jersey Transit Rail Yard, where it's this long, skinny piece of property that's mainly being used for obviously, infrastructure related to the railroad itself, but also a lot of parking for employees. So they're using that on-street parking. The DPW garage building, this is just one of the buildings on the property. You can see broken windows. This is actually storing a lot of stuff in that one building. And so it's not really weatherproof 100%. It's got a lot of cracking, both in the foundation and really throughout the building itself. And then the Count Basie property is actually interesting because those buildings that are on that property, there's a couple of them, are actually in good shape. They're doing fine. The parking lot is fine. But the rear of the property is sort of this hodgepodge that you see down here at the bottom right, which I think is also being used as overflow for DPW a bit. And so you've got a lot of sort of random storage, very much pitted ground, no drainage back there, really. It's a bit of an interesting place back there. So that, I think, is one reason why that property maybe was included in the study area, is some issues back in the rear of that property. And certainly, we heard from DPW that that is where they're seeing some flooding, kind of along those property lines. So that's a real high-level look at conditions. The study goes into a little bit more detail. I want to take you through the actual criteria in the state statute. There are eight, and they're applicable in various ways here or not, but I'll kind of quickly go through. The first criteria, criteria A, is really looking at the condition of the buildings, whether they're substandard, whether there's safety issues, if they're unsanitary, some level of dilapidation. Obsolescence is a very common use of this criteria. If there's lack of light air or space, and all of these that are combining to create issues of unhealthiness make that make that property problematic to occupy or use. So that one applies to some of the properties that I'll talk about. Criteria B is discontinuance or abandonment of buildings for at least two years consecutively, which creates them to fall into disrepair. I don't think we have that here in any way. C, publicly-owned or an improved vacant land that vacant for 10 years or more, which is not likely to be developed from the private sector because of various issues particular to the lot. And that could be property ownership, topography, conditions of the lot. Talk about whether this applies or not. D is similar to A, but it's looking more holistically at the site, including the buildings. And so again, it's looking at issues of dilapidation, obsolescence, is there overcrowding, is there just generally a problem with the conditions that is making it unsafe or unhealthy. E is relative to a couple of these, which I'll talk about. The properties are underutilized. There's particular issues with certain properties, whether that's issues of title and ownership, other conditions that really preclude development. And F and G are not applicable here. F deals with sort of natural disaster, fire, issues that create those problems. And then G is properties that are in urban enterprise zone. You are not in a U E Z here in Red Bank. But H is certainly applicable to much of this study area, as I'll talk about. H is the newest criterion here, and it's smart growth planning. Whether redevelopment here with a property itself would be consistent with smart growth planning. So I'll quickly take us through. But in addition to these eight criteria, there's a couple of things to think about when you look at the sort of legal context of redevelopment planning. And there's this important section of the law, Section 3, which makes clear that even if an individual property or block or lot that's within a larger study area, if it doesn't meet one or more of these criteria, it can still be included at a redevelopment designation because you're looking at the overall nature and condition of the area. So it may be that including that particular site is important to effectuate redevelopment, even if that site itself doesn't meet the criteria. And so we'll talk about where that may or may not apply. And then the sort of last caution here on the newest criteria, criterion H, which is the smart growth criteria. It's generally not seen as good best practice to, you know, sort of use that as your sole basis and hang your hat on smart growth, but to use that in combination with another criterion that together they might help make that designation met. So we've been keeping that in mind, too. And generally, when I'll take you through the relevant criteria here, we've tried to be very conservative. There is a lot of case law that you're not meant to just take a very loose, flexible approach. You really need to go through the criteria and think carefully about whether they do or do not apply. So we've been, I think, pretty conservative as to whether they do or do not apply. So I do have a summary table, but I will say that there's a few lots, two actually, the DPW lots, that do, we think, meet that criterion A, substandard and dilapidated and obsolete buildings. We certainly saw it on the property, whether it was the two trailers or the buildings themselves. There's a lot of obsolescence and just problematic issues of condition there. Criterion B is the discontinuance or abandonment issue, and that's not in place here in the study area. And likewise, criterion C, which is that public or vacant land, which is not likely to be able to develop on its own. In this case, you do have a lot of obviously publicly-owned land, but we don't think it quite meets that threshold. There's not particular issues with the properties and the condition that really would preclude those potentially being developed if the public entity wanted to sell them or make them available for development. So again, being conservative, we don't think that, we're not convinced that criterion C is met. However, criterion D, which is again looking at site-wide conditions, obsolescence, dilapidation. We do think that most of the properties here in the study area do need that when you look at the entirety of the sites. The exceptions here are there is one lot which is currently being used as a single-family house. And the house could use a little bit of maintenance, but generally, it's in pretty good condition. So we don't think it meets criterion D. And likewise, the two commercial properties fronting on Monma Street, there's an auto service facility and then the restaurant building on the corner with apartments above. Those buildings are in reasonably good shape, as are their general sites. So we're not suggesting that they meet the criteria. And then lastly, the Count Basie property. As I mentioned, the buildings and the parking generally are in good condition. There is some stuff in the back that I talked about, but we're not sure that that really reaches the level of making the entire site meet this criterion D. Okay, so E is looking at whether there are underutilized or stagnant properties that have some issue, whether it's ownership, title, other issues that would preclude their development. And here, we do think you have a couple. And one is the property that has the power line easement. Obviously, those power lines aren't going anywhere, so that does impair future development. And then the other one is the billboard property. That's a revenue generator. It's traditionally difficult to get billboards off property. So that is at least, you know, one issue that we would see with those two properties. So we think they meet criterion E. As I mentioned, F and G, we think are not applicable here, anywhere in the study area. But then criterion H is the smart growth criteria. And here, we really looked to the master plan because the master plan did designate a specific area to be looking at for potential redevelopment planning and/or potential TOD zone. And it really included the study area, or at least much of the study area, except it did not include the DPW or Count Basie sites. So again, being conservative, we think you could make a case that those two sites would fall into smart growth because they're very close to the train station. But because they had not been designated in the master plan, we're just being conservative and saying we don't think that they quite meet the smart growth criteria. And then the last one, which I mentioned, is that Section 3, thinking about are there properties that don't meet another criterion on this list? Or maybe they meet criterion H but nothing else, but should be considered for inclusion in the entire area? And we do think there's a few that fall here. That single-family house, because of where it is located, it's kind of on a corner, including it in a redevelopment area would allow you to kind of square off the development potential, the site, even though it's used as a single-family home, it's actually owned by Den Holt's. So there's a common ownership with a lot of the properties in the area. So we think that actually makes sense to include. And then likewise, with the auto service property, same thing. It allows for a larger, more squared-off development site, and it is also owned by Den Holt's as well. And then the third one here that we think makes some sense for Section 3 is that Count Basie property, only because of what's happening on a portion of it in the rear. It's not being used by Count Basie. That is sort of a hodgepodge right now and has the potential, when you think about how it might be combined with the DPW property, to effectuate some improvements there. So just thinking for positive planning components, we would suggest that those three properties do meet the Section 3 criteria. Okay, so here is the summary table, which I know you can't read all of it, but it's fairly easy to see which criteria are mostly met. And you see that criterion D, which is looking at the site conditions overall, dilapidation, obsolescence. As you can see, and I mentioned, most of the properties in the study area do fall into that criterion. There's a couple that meet criterion A, a couple criterion E, and then most also meet criterion H, a handful or a few in Section 3. So most of the sites in the study area meet at least one, and those that only meet, or those that meet criterion H, there's only a few that only meet that one. So most meet more than one, and so then therefore would fall into a designation, meeting that designation criteria. So that's the summary here. Oh, yeah, sorry. It was in the teal above. Let's skip right over. The only one, and this is in the study as well, the only lot that we really don't think meets a designation criteria is that restaurant property. The one on the corner is the Mexican Restaurant with the apartments above. Building's fine, business is active. The apartments seem to be occupied. It really doesn't meet the threshold of any of these criteria, except for smart growth. And as I mentioned, you can't really hang your hat solely on smart growth. So the two that also only meet smart growth, we do think can be included from Section 3. That's the Count Basie property and the single-family property and the auto service. So summary, the entire study area, except for that one lot, we would recommend for designation as an area in need of redevelopment.
What is the lot block of the restaurant?
Lot and block of the restaurant is Block 41, Lot 8.
Lot 1, Lot 8.
Yep. So that is really what I think is under your consideration tonight, after giving the public, obviously, is we would recommend that you report back to the council. They are asking for your recommendation, that is your role in terms of jurisdiction, that you would recommend that the council consider designating the entire area with the exception of Block 41, Lot 8, as an area in need of redevelopment. And then the next step, if you and the council were in agreement, would be the council to make a resolution effectuating that, and then they would direct you to prepare a redevelopment plan, which is really kind of the next major phase of the process. We are very much here at the beginning. And it's important for the public to know that if you all go down that path and you are directed to do a redevelopment plan, that is a separate process, it includes additional community engagement, it's going to be a planning process, pretty extensive. And so the requirements for the redevelopment plan, are you really looking at land uses, appropriate density of buildings and population, traffic and circulation, how the interplay with transit works, and that includes buses, too. Recreational community amenities, are there potential improvements here, ways to get benefits for the community? The redevelopment plan gets very specific on the land uses and the particular building requirements, site requirements, setbacks, coverage, all of the things that zoning typically controls are laid out in detail in the redevelopment plan. If there is relocation of residential uses, there is a requirement that you have provisioned for that relocation of residents, whether it's on a temporary or permanent basis. Any identification of property to be acquired, as I mentioned, eminent domain is not part of this redevelopment planning effort. You have to look at the relationship to other plans, both in adjacent municipalities and the county and state. You have to talk about affordable housing. There is no affordable housing, designated affordable housing that's in the study area, so that's, we think, not applicable in terms of replacing it. But there may be opportunities, and we do think there will be opportunities, to create new affordable housing here if you looked at redevelopment tools. And then lastly, you are required by the state to look at where you're going to have your vehicle charging in terms of EV spaces. So this would be the next step in the process. We would be involved. We have an urban design architecture firm. If you choose to do redevelopment planning and the council chooses to do that, there would be engagement with the community, and we'd get really detailed into design of buildings and sites. And there are elements in the master plan that have kind of laid out some overall goals and some kind of principles that we would look to build on for the redevelopment plan. But that's all dependent on your decisions and the council's decisions. So I think that's all we have. A lot of information, happy to take questions on the board.
Thanks so much, Susan. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Susan?
Susan, is there any merit to looking at the application of Section 3 to areas that haven't currently been designated for the study that would overlay with the proposed transit-oriented district?
I mean, from a planning perspective, and I'm going to defer to council on this, I'm sure that there are adjacent areas that you can make an argument for. You are only being directed to look at the designated parcels that are in the study area. So that's sort of the limit of what you can look at. If there are parcels that you think are outside the study area that might make sense to look at, you could probably suggest that as just a recommendation, but it's not any kind of a jurisdictional requirement. I'll just go back and get the map, and Mr. Lexian, I might be able to add to that.
No, I think you said it exactly correctly. This board is only empowered to decide whether or not the properties that have been designated already by the Borough Council meet the definition of a non-conomination area of redevelopment. You can't have to it. And I always like to say, this isn't, you think this is a good idea or a bad idea, that's not up to the board. The board is just simply right now to decide whether or not the criteria applies to the properties that have been designated by the council.
Thank you. A follow-up question for internal. Who owns the moving forward on the transit-oriented district plan in application to the state? Yeah, transit village.
Yes, that would be done.
Okay, but some of that is moving ahead now, like people back down working.
Until we, the only thing that's left for our transit village application is to have redevelopment area within that area. So once it council decides to designate the areas that are in need of redevelopment, we would then send that information to TRN, not transit, but DOT under our application because right now it's incomplete.
So that's from their point of view, that's their last checkbox?
Pretty much, and it's a minor.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions for Susan?
Yeah, just a quick question. For the DPW site, could you explain why the criterion C was not met?
As good as I can.
For the DPW site as a brownfield?
You could make a case that it might meet that criteria, and I'm just going back to it. However, it's not like an active spill, it's been stabilized, it's obviously being monitored by the state, but it doesn't preclude, the brownfield nature, it doesn't preclude a use of that site. Obviously, if you're going to use it for residential or something more intensive, it probably has to meet a different level. But for its current use and for many other potential uses, a brownfield designation isn't necessarily an impediment. Again, could you make a case? A case could be made that that's a public site that has some issues that would preclude or make at least that difficult to develop. So certainly that's, you can make an argument there.
And then assuming, if the board agrees to all the criterion that have been designated for all the different sites, what's the process now this goes then to the state and then they review?
Our determination?
No, it goes to the council.
This board, this board does, of course, does not make the designation. All you do as the board is determine whether or not the criterion, in your opinion, has been met. And then as we refer back to the council, the council can decide, we're not going to do it. It's completely up to the council if you want to make the actual designations.
And then if they do choose to make the designation, they send it back to you to do the actual plan, and that's where you do have a lot of involvement. It is a local matter, it's a local planning matter, so the state can't really dictate. Obviously, New Jersey Transit is a major stakeholder here, so they would certainly be involved in redevelopment planning process as a major property owner. They're, I think they've been clear that they're interested in development around the station, so they would certainly be involved in that process. But it's your local planning document.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Okay, folks, now's your turn. I already regret saying I was going to put comments and questions together. So if you can, if you have both, a comment and a question, I'd appreciate it if you led with the question to Susan. You're welcome to ask the board any questions, but right now I'd really like to focus on Susan's testimony. And you are, as I said, also welcome to make comments. But if you have a question, please lead with that. So whoever wants to come up first can come up to the other microphone. Dan, I see your hand. Speak right in the microphone. As always, you need to be sworn and give us your name and address.
I'm sorry, the swearing testimony I'm about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, the truth of the God.
I do.
And just state your name and your address.
My name is Dan Riordan, and my address is 23rd place.
Thank you.
So we can get you on the record.
Is that good enough?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly that if a property does, meets criterion H, but meets no other criterion, then it shouldn't be designated as part of an area in need of redevelopment.
Right, in terms of, that's a best practice, just because it's a fairly new criteria. There haven't been, at least in the state statute, there haven't been specific criteria developed for smart growth. There's other state agencies that have criteria for smart growth, so you can look at those. But no, generally you shouldn't use that as the only criterion. However, as I talked about, you can also look to Section 3. So you've got that A through H criteria, but also Section 3. So that can also support in addition to criterion H.
And, but just to clarify, I think I heard you say that the transit village application can move forward with either an area in need of redevelopment or a rezon, making the overlay zone an actual regular zone.
That's my understanding. Tony, you've been in more recent contact with the state?
Yes, that is true. You can do either one. You can change the standards for the VR1 zone, which this is where most of these properties fall into, or you can do a redevelopment area.
But we should be clear, that's really not a consideration for this board. That the board can't decide, we're not going to find these as an area of redevelopment because the council could pursue another action. That's not a question that's before the board right now. The only question before the board, you have to take politics out of it, you have to take everything else out of it. The only question, and we got to talk in a vacuum, is whether or not these properties meet the criteria as studied by the plan. And that's it. That's the only question before this board.
So any discussion of the transit village or transit-oriented development, that is all irrelevant to the decision that you're making today?
Correct.
So you shouldn't be talking about the transit village at all?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, this is just a recommendation in any way that whether or not it meets the criteria, it has nothing to do with what might happen at the property, the board has no involvement in that at this stage.
Okay.
And shouldn't play any role in there.
Come back, please. All right.
If there were 100 people here, I'd make you wait, but there aren't, so go ahead.
Well, I was just thinking of the planner, actually. So.
I'm going to make her stay all night, so go ahead.
I'm here at your disposal.
All right. So I object strenuously to the idea of a redevelopment plan. I'm going to put my objections into three categories. I object on principle, I object because I think it's a violation of the rules, and I object because of the practical outcome. So the principle, the reason that this exists, which is in the redevelopment report, is because the New Jersey Constitution allows towns to take states, to take steps like this for blighted areas. I don't see any place over there that's blighted. DPW, a little bit on the blighted side, but otherwise, there's nothing blighted there. There's nothing there that prevents someone from redeveloping. It's an area that could be redeveloped without having to go through the process of creating a redevelopment zone, redevelopment area. And I think the best evidence of that is that this developer put a development right next to the redevelopment area with no big changes to zoning, with no tax breaks. It was just a regular development, and we got whatever the 15% affordable housing out of it.
Mr. Riordan, again, I'm sorry, as you've heard before, you're making arguments that are better made to the Borough Council. The board has no authority to make a decision based upon objections as to whether or not the area should be in redevelopment because there are other alternatives that could be done. It's illegal for the board to be considering what you're asking them to consider. And I want you to understand that. The argument you're making is completely appropriate to make before the Borough Council. Go before the Borough Council if the board decides that it meets the criteria and say, hey, there are other ways to do this. I'm objecting to a redevelopment. This board can't decide, we don't want to go towards redevelopment because of everything that Camille just said, so we're not going to do it. So your argument is in the wrong place right now.
Well, so that segues us to the rules. So this is, to me, a twisting of the rules. The rules are designed, the rules that you're obligated to follow are designed for properties that can't otherwise be developed. There are several criteria that you can use in determining that, but the primary determination is this is a blighted area. It can't be redeveloped unless we take exceptional action, and the exceptional action is the redevelopment area. So in particular on the rules, the only two criteria that most of the properties meet, I don't know all, but six of them maybe, are criterion D and criterion H. So criterion H, as we've heard, is not really strong enough to stand on its own. So it really comes down to criterion D. And I don't see how any of those properties, possible exception of DPW again, are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. So in addition to the fact that they're dilapidated, that they're obsolete, those things, those may be true. I don't see how those parking lots are dilapidated or obsolete, they're parking lots. But even if they were, they can only meet criterion D if they are obsolete, dilapidated, and to an extent that they are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. I don't feel unsafe walking in those parking lots. I don't think it's impacting my health. I don't think it's corrupting my morals. I don't think that is bad for my welfare. So I don't think any of these properties, okay, I'm not eager to go into any of those DPW buildings, but I don't think any of the other properties come close to being detrimental to our health or morals or welfare. So I think the rules are being twisted because we have something else that we want.
One more man.
Okay. And then the, my big, my biggest problem is the practical result. So you have two possibilities when you want to give somebody breaks on zoning, their area need of rehabilitation and an area need of redevelopment. The only two reasons to pursue an area in need of redevelopment, which is the more stringent standard, the more difficult, the blighted area. The only reason to declare an area blighted is to take it by eminent domain or to give somebody a 30-year tax break.
Okay, so Mr. Riordan, again, I'm going to repeat what I said before. The argument you are now making is not within the power of this board. You're now making the argument why they shouldn't require it an area of redevelopment because you feel they should be doing something else where there's some ulterior motive for doing it. That's an argument for council, not for this board. This board does not play any role whatsoever in giving a pilot, which is what you referred to, or to find something blighted area. We have nothing to do with that. You're in the wrong place.
So you're saying that, you're saying that this board should not consider the consequences of their actions?
It's not, this is not a, this board is not authorized to make a determination, we don't like redevelopment, we're not going to, we're going to say no. They don't have the right to do that. It would be illegal. And I don't mean illegal that the police are going to come in here and start arresting board members. I mean, it's against the law, and that's not their role. Their role is purely to decide, based upon the study made, whether or not these properties meet the criteria. Everything else that you're talking about or arguing with the board and council to, but not for here.
The one part of your comment regarding zoning changes is very much a part of if this moves forward, the next step that this board would take would be to actually work on a plan. I don't mean a site plan for the actual site, that's even further down the road for what happened, to actually talk about the zoning for this area, height, density, everything. So that part of it is involved, but not at this stage. Down the road it is, there'll be public hearings, there'll be meetings about that. But then after this step, if this happens, really either way if this happens, the council is the next step. And then we talk about an actual plan for the whole area, then we would talk about an actual site plan and an application for redevelopment. So this is really just the first step, and we are, and I don't like it all that much either, bound by what we're doing here tonight. It's a very, very specific charge.
So even if the board considers this pointless, you still have to approve the redevelopment plan?
The board does not have discretion to, as I keep saying, board does not have discretion to say, we don't like redevelopment, so we're just going to say no. They do not have the right to do that. It's, as the chairman said, there's a very, very limited jurisdiction that the board has tonight, which is solely to look at the properties based upon the planner's report and decide whether or not these specific properties meet the criteria to be eligible for redevelopment. That's the only job this board has. And if the board finds it meets the criteria, but we don't like it, so we're just going to vote no, that would be illegal. They're not allowed to do that. Again, those are political arguments, this is not a political question right here. What you're talking about are the politics of it, that goes before the council.
And this action tonight doesn't mean that anyone would ever get a pilot or not, that's up to the council. What it does mean if something happens here is that next step where we all, and I mean we, the public, everyone gets an opportunity to talk about what this site might look like from a general. from a general zoning standpoint. And as I said, the step after that is what it might actually look like.
But it does give every council, is our current council and every council in the future forever the power to give any of those properties a 30-year tax break?
It, it, they have it anyway. They don't need this from us to give a pilot.
It makes it a little more difficult for you.
It does. They could do it without us.
But we should not, Mr. Chairman, we should not even, again, we should not even be discussing pilots because pilots have nothing to do with this hearing tonight. The board doesn't have, the board doesn't have the power to grant a pilot, and it shouldn't be in your consideration. If it's in your consideration or your thought process, then you're not doing your job as a board member.
Okay. So I guess the only thing I have to say is those parking lots are not blighted, and I don't feel unsafe or unwell there.
And all I have to say is your time is up.
Yeah.
But thank you.
It's good to see you. I haven't seen you in like four years at least.
Bring up another redevelopment area. Come back.
Who's next?
See, Neil, I told my wife I'm gonna be home till like 11:00. Mr. Havens. Come on up.
I have a three-hour statement to hold.
You're gonna have to do it over the course of the next four years at five minutes at a time.
Just go for anyone. Just go for anyone, okay? Do you swear a testimony about the gift will be the truth of all, you're telling me about the truth self, you got it?
Yes.
And just state your name and give your address, please.
Chris Havens, 111 River Street, Grand Bank, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I think it's a wide consensus across the entire United States of America, planning today, land use, the parking lots, surface parking lots are a terrible waste of dirt. And blight doesn't even cover it. It's such a waste of prime urban land, parking lots. They're terrible, and they should be reused in a different way while maintaining parking for the people who need it.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the public have any comments or questions? Comment?
I'm just gonna square you in also. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, I'm telling you about the truth self, you got it?
I do.
And just state your name and give your address, please.
Mary Ellen S., 95 Hudson Avenue.
Thank you.
So, okay, Mr. Lexstein, I, I understand your point, Mary Ellen. 95 Hudson Avenue.
And just get close to the mic, please, so we can pick you up on the recording.
I feel like I have to eat the mic. Okay.
It really is almost that, I know.
So just to be clear, Mr. Lexstein, I understand your point to be that what happens here has nothing to do with the tax abatement. And the tax abatement, a tax abatement is not required if a redevelopment designation actually is approved down the line. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's how I was at the conversation with Dan. I was intrigued by your comments, I don't remember your first name, Susan, by this idea that the redevelopment designation actually gives the borough more control over what is that, what is actually built there in terms of design, zoning, and so forth.
Yeah, that's correct. And that is one of the benefits of redevelopment, is that you can get into details of design that legally boards like this can't with regular zoning. So you can look at, you know, building and facade design, enassing, and materials. You can get really into the weeds a little bit if the borough thinks it's appropriate for this area in ways that traditional zoning can't.
And to, to, let me just interrupt to highlight the importance of that. If I had the nerve, I would name all the ugly buildings I've approved in town that I hate the way they look, but I couldn't deny them because they look ugly. Then we now have that opportunity in a redevelopment zone to really have a far more significant impact on what something physically looks like than we have ever had before.
Well, one of my major concerns is that I feel with all the development that's going on with undersized, high-density apartments, we're really losing the ethnic and economic diversity of the town, which always made Red Bank unique and very different from its more affluent neighbors. And I would hate to see us lose that. And I know a lot of this development has been, we've pursued it in, as a goal for more affordable housing. But we're now at a point in Red Bank where we have more homeless people than ever. They're coming from all over because they know they can at least get a meal here. And I would hope as a planning entity, you know, we would look at what the unintended consequences of some of our actions are. But my, my question to Susan is, would then, with this added flexibility, would the borough be able to increase the set aside for affordable housing? Because we have approved more than 700 units of new housing in this town, and we have actually exacerbated the lack of housing for working-class people and low-income people. And we are actually pushing a lot of our people who work, you know, in landscaping, in restaurants, in childcare, we're pushing them out of town, actually. So could we say, instead of the 10% or 15% or even 20%, could we say to the developer, hey, we want 40%, and we want those, those units to be suitable for families? Now, I don't know if I want families with children really living in close proximity to the railroad tracks, but I think one of the problems here is none of these buildings that are going up, and I agree with you, Dan, they are ugly, they're very homogeneous, there's nothing unique, you know, can't, but they're not suitable for families with children either. And when you bring up the restaurant on the corner of West and Mammoth, you know, Juanito's, like, that's a unique property. That's a beautiful property. The owner of that property, you know, really enhanced that area of town, as did a lot of the other small business owners along Shrewsbury Avenue. So can we do that? Can we say, okay, Mr. Denhols, who is on record in Red Bank Green in an article in March of 2022, being very clear that he's gonna come back and whatever you give him, he's gonna ask for more? That's, that's a done deal right there. So can we do that? Can we say, Mr. Denhols, we want 40 units, 40% of those units to be for affordable, and we want them to be suitable for families with children? Can we do that? We could do that as part of the redevelopment plan?
We could, we could do, we can ask for almost anything we want. By the way, I've never met a developer who didn't ask for more, so I don't blame him. I don't like it when they do, but everybody does. Regardless, regardless, we're, we're not talking about familial status and whether something is suited for a family or not because it's against the law to do that. But we can ask for whatever we want. I love 40% affordable housing. But to get 40% of affordable housing is gonna cost me something that I'm unwilling to do. And that's like a nine-story building. Because the only way someone's gonna give us 40% of affordable housing is that they want more density. So there is a balance of, we can, we can ask for up to 20%. Well, the ordinance is 20% once you reach a certain number of units.
200.
I think it's a little more than 200, but yes, we can go to 20%. Could we negotiate more? Yes, it'll cost us something. I don't know what. It'll probably be height or density. But that's the, the whole next phase of this, and you can, Mr. Lexstein wanted to cut you off a few hours ago.
I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep saying, none of this has anything to do with what we're doing tonight.
It's all the next step. It's all the next step. It's, we are not taking, I'm, I'm, I'm humoring you because it's only eight o'clock. This is all next step stuff. We can't take any of this into account tonight.
Well, but I asked for my, I asked my question.
And I, no, no.
Then you said you would welcome commentary.
And I am, I appreciate it.
And then you're telling me I can only comment on certain things, so I honestly think that's fair.
You can comment on whatever you want. We just can't take any of that into account in our decision tonight. We very much will in the next step.
All right. Well, then let's get back to the study.
You've got a minute left.
As Mr. Riordan said, you know, it's criteria D and it's criteria H. But Susan agrees that D is kind of questionable about most of these properties with the exception of the DPW, which really does need to be repaired, replaced. And you know what? We can't wait 10 years for this process to go through for that to happen. I think that has to go through a lot quicker than this whole redevelopment rigmarole. So the, the idea is that most of the properties in this, the areas covered by this study, the lots covered by this study, don't meet the criteria. They don't meet it.
I'd like to respond to that. I just want to be clear that I actually think that criteria D does apply, and I said it, to most of the study area, including the parking lots. There's a lot of case law in New Jersey that parking lots, to the earlier comment, are obsolete, that it's not the best use of land, particularly in downtown. And that has been supported by the courts. It's criteria A, which is looking at the buildings themselves, that I think applies to the DPW properties only.
Well, forgive me, Susan, but the other.
The other 10 seconds.
The other idea is these redevelopment, you do the redevelopment designation because the property is unappealing for development, but we are under siege by developers in this town right now. And I don't think we have to do anything to bring them here and spend their money. And they all make very big profits on it.
Thank you. Sir, you raised your hand first.
I've got it.
Oh, you hereby designate, the young lady next to you may come up and speak. I didn't mean you, Jack. You weren't coming up for you. You're not young or a lady.
I'm just gonna square your name. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, I'm telling you about the truth self, you got it?
I do.
And just state the name of the records.
My name is Anna Torres.
And your address.
191 Shrewsbury Avenue, Grand Bank, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Closer, please. Start talking, we'll let you know.
Okay. Okay, so my name is Anna. I am Juan Torres's daughter. My father has owned Juanito's for about 30 years now. So we are just worried as a family to see if this affects us on our property. And as mentioned in the study, our, our property does not meet the criteria. So we were just, wanted to see if this will affect our property.
I, I can answer that. And Susan, you correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's not gonna be included in this, in the recommendation if the board finds that, that the study's gonna be adopted. So note, would it impact your property?
Okay. Thank you. That was just the question.
And, and if, if, if the board disagreed with Susan and felt it did meet the criteria, it still wouldn't really affect your property because it's a non-eminent domain study, which means, it means that the borough would not have the power to take it from you.
Okay. We don't wish you to do anything.
Right.
And also, I just wanted to add, if the board decided to keep your property in it, you could be the redeveloper of your own property. You can request to be the redeveloper of your own property, so you would benefit from whatever comes with being a redeveloper.
Meaning if, if at one of the future meetings, we lay down zoning for this area, and your property was included, and you wanted to develop it, maybe keep the restaurant on the first floor and go up three floors, or do something completely different, you would probably benefit, and I'm not suggesting you ask to be in the plan. I'm just saying that, that, that opportunity would be, you could perhaps do something with it that you couldn't do right now. But for the, as far, we haven't talked about this, but we're not really interested in including that. If you wanted it to be included, you'd probably have to go to the mayor and council at some point about that. You got a pretty good thing. I wouldn't mess with it.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Two minutes and 12 seconds, by the way. Feel free, anyone who's beat that, under, under, I mean. Anyone next have any comments or questions? It's hard to believe. It really is. You could have all stayed home and watched this on Zoom. Teams.
Only that you should not let one of you restaurant ever go away.
I agree. All right, do we have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Shauna, Mark, or Susan, do you have anything you want to say, conclude with, or add?
I have nothing further, Chairman.
Yeah, I think we've made ourselves clear, Mr. Chairman. And this is essentially, the board has to decide whether the properties meet the criteria or not. If you find that it does, as Susan has recommended, you would vote to adopt the report.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to press the button there.
I'm gonna press the button because I'm confused. There are, there were several areas, several sections that were definitely below there. There were a couple that were a little foggy. If we approve the whole thing, when the council gets it, can they change, change the areas or what? I mean, if, if those, some of those foggy areas, like that single-family home.
Yeah, Barbara, I understand your question. And the question is, yes, you don't have to accept the, I should, it's early, you don't have to accept the report exactly as it is written. You can disagree with Susan's report. You can say, we find that these properties do meet the criteria, but we disagree with Susan that these other ones do. And you can exclude them from the report, from the recommendation, rather. You don't have to necessarily take the report as a whole.
That's correct.
And the council would have that same power to do the actual designations if you recommend the entire area. They don't have to take the entire, the entire area in, in total.
And the owners, there are five owners? Granted, the, there are two fairly minor owners, but not every property in the area that we would designate tonight necessarily will get developed. So, you know, the Count Basie could say, great, I, I don't want, I'm not involved. I don't want this. The single-family house, if, if some, if Denhols doesn't own it, could stay out of it. We're not taking anything, we're not forcing anything on anyone that doesn't want to develop their property.
It creates opportunity, but it doesn't create a requirement.
I have a feeling some people aren't gonna think it's opportunity, but.
Does anyone else from the board have any questions or comments? Would anyone on, on the board like to offer a resolution, a motion for us to consider?
Having heard, having read the report, heard the testimony, I think the area is in need of, I'd call it an area in need of coherence. And, and I do find that the criteria, particularly with respect to the obsolescence of the train station, its parking, its associated parking lots, meet the criteria, and I would move to adopt the plan as presented.
Is there a second?
May I ask another question? Historic train station, how does that fit into this?
In the next phase, when we talk about.
Okay, all right.
A plan that may exist.
I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know.
Next time.
Can I just say that that might be my favorite building in Mid-Maine, it's the train station. So I definitely think a redevelopment plan would look closely at your historic assets, including the little, there's a toll booth there, too. It's somewhat historic. Yeah. And so it would look at the interplay between future development and those historic assets and how to, you know, protect those.
Okay, we're voting for the motion to recommend the mayor and council that the zone be an area in need of redevelopment.
With the exception of the site that the law.
Juanito's. And just to clarify, you're not recommending that the area become an area in need of redevelopment. You're, you're recommending that these, that you find that the area meets the criteria for an area of redevelopment.
Right.
You're not taking a position on the redevelopment itself.
Correct.
All right. Greg Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Christina Bonitakis?
Yes.
Lou DiManto?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Brian Carnigan?
Yes.
Damian Cuso?
While I don't love the idea of the order in which the state puts this process in, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, as always, it's a pleasure to see so many people here. I know we have the minutes, we have the minutes. Oh, yeah, sure, let's do the minutes first. So if anyone wants to hear the resolution, we've got it ready. This is like the old days in the 90s. We have the minutes of March 4th, our regular meeting minutes, March 4th, 2024. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes of March 4th? There being none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? So we have a resolution. Handy?
Mr. Chairman, the resolution is, it just basically goes over that you're adopting the report, and that excludes the Block 41 body as not meeting criteria, and that the others do, and you're adopting the report for your reasons and doing so.
Someone want to make a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Read that motion.
No, no, you have to vote.
Roll call vote, sorry. And Wilson.
Greg Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Christina Bonitakis?
Yes.
Damian Cuso?
Yes.
Lou Demento?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Fernandez?
Yes.
Brian Parnigan?
Yes.
As has been said, should the council continue to move forward with this, there will be public meetings and hearings, and you'll be hearing a lot more about this. So thanks again all for coming. Thank you, Susan, for affirming you, all of the hard work on this. We very much appreciate it. Motion adjourned? Second? All in favor? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a meeting? The next meeting is Monday.